Okay, so you want me to start again?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Yeah, for sure. So for the people who are watching on the recorded, I submitted two sets of plans that have been previously submitted and approved by PennDOT. The first one was dated 2016, and this was, again, to accommodate safe pedestrian crossings across Bustleton Pike in the vicinity, in the area of the Nissan dealership. Just to give you a little bit of historical background, the chief of police gave me a call at the time, Bill Wegman, asked me if I can come out there and meet with him and a representative of Nissan to listen to their concerns. And you could see, if anybody was out there during the daytime, you can see how there is a number of people crossing Bustleton Pike in and around the Nissan. And if you think about it, it makes sense. You have service on one side of the road. You have new car dealership on the other. So whether it's an employee going back and forth, or a customer who drops their car off for service, wants to go look at new cars, or just anybody, you know, in that area, that there's obviously a reason to get back back and forth across Bustleton Pike. So we actually threw cameras out there and did some pedestrian counts. And we found there was, we did a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday when the business was open, when dealership was open. On the lowest day, we had 272 people crossing in and around the Nissan. And on that busiest day, there was 438 crossings of Bustleton Pike in the vicinity of the Nissan dealership. And what we also found was the traffic, the posted speed limit is 35 miles per hour, but the 85th percentile is 50 miles per hour. So people travel a lot faster than they should be on this section of road. So we developed this concept to provide a safe way for people to cross Bustleton Pike. The way it works is you push the button, and the rapid rectangular flashing beacon starts flashing. And the motorist is required, if there's a pedestrian in there, to yield to that pedestrian. So if you can see on this plan that's on the screen now, there's yield bars, there's like a bunch of triangles on either side. That's where the motorist has to stop and yield to the pedestrian who's crossing this crosswalk here. It's a little different than a traffic signal in the sense that if, once the person crosses over and it's still flashing, the motorist is permitted to, you know, to move on. They don't have to wait until they get a green signal. So it's more efficient, but it does provide a safe way for people to cross this highway where people are traveling relatively high speeds. So again, the residents, when they, when they found out about this project, were concerned about losing their left turns in and out of Bridle Path Lane. We came up with the drawing that's dated April 2018. And essentially, it moved the island away from Bridle Path Lane, closer to the two buildings for the Nissan dealership, like the service and the new car showroom. That's what's on the screen here. So the same exact concept, but instead of happening at Bridle Path Lane, it's happening mid-block. So if somebody is walking along Bustleton Pike, once they get to the other side, they push the button, the sign with, has a pedestrian warning sign flashes, and then the motorist is required to stop, and then the person crosses from one side to the other. And then, when the motorist sees that the pedestrians finished their crossing, they're now permitted to proceed. So that, we submitted the original to PennDOT. By the way, Nissan paid for the preliminary engineering of this drawing here that ultimately went and was submitted to PennDOT with the understanding that the funds that Nissan paid for was considered a portion matching fund, if you would, for the project. So PennDOT approved $150,000 to take that first drawing through to construction. After, after, you know, reacting to the concerns of the residents, one of the things that, if you'll see on that second drawing, there's, we need to modify some of the driveways for the Nissan. Need to close the one driveway, open the other driveway, restrict some movements. So it's a little bit more costlier than it would have been with the original concept. So we asked Remington and Vernick to give us a cost estimate of the current concept. And they asked them to bring this to completion to be about roughly $175,000. So the Arley grant process, the way it works, the township can go out there and build this project. And once it's done, ask PennDOT for the funds that were approved. And in this case, it's roughly $150,000 that was already approved for the project. So where we stand now, if the township wants to move forward to implementing this safety improvement, the township would have to spend $174,000, $175,000. That's, again, that's an estimate. And they would get reimbursed $150,000. So assuming this number's a good number from Remington and Vernick, then there's a $25,000 shortfall to bringing this project to a, to a successful completion.
Joe, or both Joes, Joe F. and Joe G.?
Yes.
Would state, would liquid fuels money be applicable for the shortfall, this $25,000 shortfall in this?
You, yes, you can use whatever funding the township can come up with to, and it's certainly liquid fuels is, this is applicable. You're using those funds on the roads.
And it was my understanding, though, because we've, I think we've seen this previously. I forget when, sometime earlier this year, but wasn't there some talk, excuse me, about Colonial, first, they didn't want to cover the shortfall, then they did want to cover the shortfall, and then I heard talks broke down? Is there a current update on where we are with that?
Well, I think not. Ron's on the call, but I don't think anybody ever asked Ron to, to make up that difference that I know of, so.
Okay.
If Ron, are you?
Yes, I'm here. You can hear me?
I can hear you, a little low, but I can hear you.
Okay. So after the meeting that we had in July of last year, I have not heard back from the township in any forms. I've sent some letters and phone calls, emails. So I don't really, never really received an answer. So I appreciate having a floor and thank you for having me this evening. Just a little background, I mean, I've been in the township, working in Feasterville for close to 40 years. 28 years at Colonial Nissan, and about 10-plus, 12-plus years at the used car lot at 301 Bustleton Pike. It's the only place I've ever worked is Feasterville. I know the street very well. It's a dangerous street, and unfortunately, people travel at high rates of speed. After we had the meeting in July, there's always typically a fender bender of some kind, but there was, at latest winter, we had a car that went airborne over the bollards and totaled out two of my vehicles. If somebody was there, they, it probably would have been a fatality. But it happened on a Saturday night, and the police were there and everything else. So I want everybody to understand that 90% of all my consumers that come to Colonial Nissan after all these years are locals. Feasterville, Southampton, Upper Southampton, Northampton, Ben Salem, Somerton. People are not coming from Chicago. So the people that we're protecting to have this light are our local community. I guess I'm trying to understand why, since we're protecting citizens, and I think I was generous to put up $27,000 to get this thing started, why, why I would have to pay for it. And we're really protecting the community. I will not sell one more car with this light or without this light. If anything, I may sell less cars because it's going to be a little bit of a hindrance to come into the place or leave. Because you can only make, I believe, a right-hand turn out, not a left-hand turn because of this device. So the way, the way I'm presenting this this evening is, it's simply a safety factor if the township wants to do this for local citizens, a majority of which, yes, they do go to Colonial Nissan. But there are local citizens that live locally, and I know, I'm all for it, but I believe I did my part.
If I, if I could speak now, what we have done as the township, we have met with the Colonial Nissan representative individually. We met with him previously in a work session. We met with him on the agenda as a whole board. And again, more recently, as in this work session, again. You're using liquid, if you're going, this Arley grant is basically liquid fuels dollars. It's a reimbursement grant. So no matter what, if we spend this, you're going to be putting the monies back into the liquid fuel fund. But with that being said, it says, any, any monies that you're being reimbursed with have to go into that fund. So if we're using this as a stopgap, that 20, let's say that $25,000 hypothetically, it has to be, that money has to be given back to the liquid fuels. So where's it going to come from? It's going to come from your general fund. So it's not going to be, it's not like basically a free ride out of liquid fuels. It's not. It's going to be coming out of your disadvantaged general fund right now.
What kind of timeframe do we have to pay that back, Joe?
Well, I mean, it's, we would, we would pay it out first, and then get, and then get the reimbursement, you know, through the program. And then put the monies back into the liquid fuels fund. So I mean, we're basically the first one in. We get reimbursed, and then we got to put it back into the liquid fuels. And we, we have also spent, I believe, I guess with the applications and all, if my, my memory serves me, anywhere from $8,000 to $12,000, ourself as a township.
We've already spent that?
Yep.
So Joe, what you, what you're saying is that out of $175,000, $150,000 of it would come out of liquid fuels, and $25,000 of it would come out of the general fund. And then, when we're reimbursed, that money that came out of the general fund would have to go back into our liquid fuels.
No, let's say this way, ultimately, you're only allowed $150,000 to get reimbursed on and to use for this allocation. So no matter what, you're taking 150 out of liquid fuels, you're going to get reimbursed 150, goes into the liquid fuels fund. The 25, no matter what, is going to, is going to be paid by your general fund.
Well, can we take, can we take the whole $175,000 out of liquid fuels?
You can, but then your general fund's going to have to reimburse liquid fuels the additional $25,000.
If the money you would have spent, that $25,000 on maintaining the township roads would either not get done or would have to come from somewhere. In other words, we only have.
The cost is still there. You can't escape the cost by using a different fund. You're still going, you know, you're still going to have to pay for it. It's still going to eventually come out of your general fund. And tonight, you have the discussion there, on the agenda tonight is a brief discussion on the COVID financial relations, you know? So we're going to be short there, like we predicted. And, you know, your general fund is what we're trying to protect right now.
Hey, Joe Fiaco?
Yeah.
Do you feel that this is a very good, safe process?
I, I want to say.
There was some questions about it before, and, you know, we have a traffic light up halfway up the hill, you know, that kind of thing. And I thought we had some conversation about why can't we do that? Is that rationale?
Yeah, I think that the problem is, and I guess going back to like Ron's question, you know, why me? I think there's, the reason that we have 400 or so people crossing Bustleton Pike has a lot to do with the Nissan dealership being bifurcated by the highway. You have, you know, customers coming to Nissan and needing to go to both sides of the road, as well as perhaps employees and what have you. So that kind of explains why so many people are crossing there. If you were to put a crossings, let's say up, I don't know, 1,000 feet up the road, well, people are just going to continue to cross where they're crossing today. They're not going to walk 500 feet up to the crossing, push the button, cross, or come back down. You know, so those crossings, we, we didn't quantify the number of, you know, people crossing that were associated with the Nissan dealership. But it's got to be the majority of people crossing there are associated with the Nissan, whether it's a customer, or an employee, or, you know, somebody bringing a car in for repairs. But, so, but I believe that this is actually addressing that need. There's a need for people to get across Bustleton Pike in the vicinity of the Nissan dealership. I would hope, just saying, Remington gave us a cost proposal. There's some pretty big contingency on there and design fee. I would hope this is a worst-case scenario, this 175. If we, let's say we got in there and we built this signal and got this completely done for $140,000, right? We would go to PennDOT and reimburse the entire $140,000. It wouldn't cost anything. So, but it's possible it could cost $175,000. So if it does, we do have this theoretical $25,000 shortfall that we need to be aware of. And like Joe said, I think, I think we can, by law, use our liquid fuels for this $25,000 shortfall. The question becomes, we don't have that much liquid fuels to begin with, and we have a lot of roads in Lower Southampton we need to maintain. So it's hoped that we would be able to find an alternative source rather than liquid fuels for this theoretical shortfall.
Hey, Mr. Fiaco, Joe, I have a question. This is Kim Kutsaradis.
Hi, Kim.
How are you, Joe?
Good.
Question, now, you had just mentioned that, you know, possibly this might come in at $140,000, and then the grant would pay for the whole thing. But how about if it comes in at like $190,000? Could we, then we'd be theoretically on the responsible for paying even more than that 25? Now, I'm just questioning, do you really think, you know, is there a chance that it could go over that $175?
Couldn't we put it out for bid, see what it comes in at, and then make a decision? Incur the cost of putting it out for bid?
I mean, that would be my.
What would the cost of putting it out to bid be?
Hundreds of dollars.
Hundreds?
Well, don't, don't we have to put it out to bid because of the price?
Yes, but, but you could, like Joe says, he doesn't know what the final number's going to be. If you're not, if it comes in $190, you're probably going to say no. If it comes in somewhere in between, you might say yes. You might have a further discussion with Ron, but everybody will know their, know their options.
Well, Frank, we do have a little bit more design that needs to be done before we can put it out to bid. If they pull out that second plan I had there, the, the new driveway to the Nissan dealership has to be designed. And I think we can pass on the ADA ramp design as a design bill to the contractor, has to get the ADA designs approved by PennDOT before they build them. That's a possibility, but the, we'll need some more, a little bit more design before we hand this off to a contractor for a bid.
What are we, what are we talking about there, Joe?
It shouldn't be that much. I, I just, I don't want to be put on the spot here as far as a dollar, man, but.
Plus, Joe, plus, Joe, because of the type of road Bustleton Pike is, a lot of things that are on this is necessary to have, because it's a four-way highway, it's a four-way, four-lane highway. And because of the amount of, the speed limit there, things, things aren't negotiable to correct, as far as what PennDOT's concerned, with the type of crosswalk we have to put there, if we put one there.
Well, yeah, I guess.
According to their standards, or because of the kind of road it is.
Right. PennDOT has seen both of the, approved the first one, and then conceptually approved our modified plan. But we still, we still need to get an HOP to get the work done so that, you know, it all has to be done according to PennDOT spec. But it's, it's not rocket science. We have like one driveway. We have a traffic island that has to be constructed in the median, and a number of ADA ramps. The signal mast arms are pretty simple, you know, they're going to hold a sign up with a flasher. It's solar powered, so it's, we don't have to worry about, you know, the electrical source and things of that nature.
Any, any overhead lighting necessary there?
I have to assume the overhead lighting is, is already present, but I'm.
I, I have another question for Joe Fiaco, and maybe, maybe Chief Cremel can chime in too. Is Ted around tonight? Is, is Chief Cremel on board with us?
He should be.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, uh, Chief and, and Joe, question for you. So if this thing is installed, and we have people traveling southbound down Bustleton Avenue, at, you know, at the top of the hill, and they, and they catch the green light, and they're coming down the hill, and a pedestrian pushes the button, is there, are we at any type of risk that, that the people traveling in the automobiles going southbound might possibly not be able to stop in enough time to allow the pedestrians to cross?
Well.
It's always a possibility, you know, people speeding and things of that nature, what road conditions because of the rain or snow or whatever else. You know, I think if you're doing 35 miles an hour, they'll be fine. You know, if they're speeding a little, if they're speeding a lot, then maybe it's a problem. But, you know, we say 50 miles an hour is the average speed. That's, that's should have the sight distance to stop.
Okay, you do think that sight distance is okay, then?
If I can answer, Jim, Kim, that's a great point you make. As a pedestrian, if I pushed a button and I blindly walk into the road hoping that somebody maybe approaching is able to stop, I have to be responsible as a pedestrian too. So you make that eye contact, they have to stop, they have to yield to you. If people are not yielding to the pedestrian, then we get the police out there and start handing out tickets till they actually, you know, do, if they, if they're not. But that's, we should not, as a pedestrian, be walking out hoping that they see us and stop, because you know how any motorist at any given time may not really be paying attention, so.
Plus, under that sight distance, isn't that some part of the criteria that PennDOT looks at, the sight distance?
Yeah, there's adequate sight distance out there, certainly for 35 and probably for 50 miles an hour. That's part of the reason that people are traveling so fast. They have five, five lanes wide. They feel comfortable doing 50 miles per hour. That's why they're doing it. Unfortunately, you know, when we, when we put our cameras out there and counted all these pedestrians, probably the majority of pedestrians are stopping in the center turn lane because they can't get a gap in traffic. And so they're crossing it in two phases anyway. This would actually give them an island, a physical island to stop at before they finish the second half of their cross.
So Joe, when one pushes the button to cross, is there a timing mechanism there like there is at a, at a stationary traffic signal? Like when they press the button, it won't, you know, stop traffic for five, or eight, or 10 seconds? Or does, is it instantaneous?
Well, the flashing will start when you push the button. And then there's a built-in delay time that gives the people who are traveling and approaching a chance to continue on if they're, if they're already committed to, you know, passing through. And then, it's like a normal traffic signal. We would be giving them three and a half feet per second, you know, assuming that they're going to be walking at three and a half feet per second to get from one side of the street to the other. The one good thing about this is, if three and a half feet per second is a, is a slow walker, if the person who pushed the button is relatively healthy and is walking at six feet per second, once the, once this crosswalk is clear, that motorist is permitted to go and proceed through because they just yielded to the pedestrian who called, who pushed the button and got their, the flashing light, if that makes sense.
So was the only restrict, the only restriction was the driveway? There was no other restrictions besides the one, the driveway that you talked about earlier? That PennDOT put you there?
Actually, well, I can give you a little bit more, I didn't, I failed to mention this. One of the issues that was brought up by PennDOT, because we wanted a mid-block crossing, is they wanted SEPTA brought into the loop. So we reached out to SEPTA, and SEPTA indicated that if we, if we were to build this crossing there, they would relocate the SEPTA bus stop to the flashing crossing, the crosswalk. Which, which makes sense. If you think about, I'm taking a bus that's going to work, I get off, I walk across the street if I go to work. And then, you know, and likewise, if it's the, it's the opposite, you know, commute, even if I didn't have to cross the street to get to work, I'm going to have to cross the street to get the bus to go home. And it's a logical place to have that crosswalk, I mean, the, the bus stop at a place where you can safely cross the road.
Well, wouldn't it work with the traffic light being an obvious place as well?
Well, we don't have traffic lights on Bustleton Pike here. If you think about it, like Bridle Path, for example, there's no traffic light there, but there is a SEPTA bus stop there. So if somebody gets on, you know, northbound, a SEPTA bus that takes them north, and it brings them back home, it drops them off at Bridle Path, they have to cross Bustleton Pike somehow. There's no traffic light. They got to walk all the way back to the top of the hill to get to the traffic light or all the way down the county line. So that's kind of the reason the pedestrians need this, because they don't have a traffic light as an option.
So, so for tonight, then, to, I don't know, to draw this to some type of conclusion, I guess we need a little more design investigation or design to be done on it before we can put it out to bid, correct? And then we'll have a better idea of the, of the true price.
Well, again, I, we have a good handle on it. I mean, at 174, if you look at that Remington Vernick, you know, spreadsheet, the contingent, there's a 20% contingency. That's, that's for something the contractor might find out there that he didn't, wasn't aware of. And that the $35,000 listed as design permitting and inspection, that seems like a pretty high number. Down, down the bottom is a $35,000. So you see, the, the construction cost is actually $116,000. So we're not talking about a very expensive project here. So 116, they have 20% contingency, may, may run into some things, you know? And so 139 of the construction cost, the design permitting inspection, it shouldn't be all that high. So again, that $35,000 is a big ticket item. But again, I'm looking at this as a worst-case scenario, just to make sure when we go into this project, we will definitely have enough money to get it done. You know, there, it won't be no surprise to, you know, moving forward.
I hate, I hate to be the bearer of bad information, but it, it just seems to me that there's, there's an awful lot of risk involved in what we're trying to accomplish here. And I understand it, but it would seem to me as though a traffic light would certainly be better. I know there's not one there, there's not one until the top of the hill. But, and, I don't know, it's just, just seems to me as though it's fairly risky. You know, with people getting out in the middle of a road and, you know, trying to get pretty, the other half of the road. And I don't know, that just seems to me that there's sizable risk, would be my.
Well, if I, if I can explain, the way a traffic signal warrant works, you need enough traffic on the side street to justify stopping the main line. So on Bustleton Pike, in order to get a traffic light on the side street, there has to be a significant amount of traffic to stop every single person on Bustleton Pike. So these side streets don't have enough traffic to justify that. However, with the operation at the Nissan dealership and all the pedestrian traffic, we can justify putting this signal in there to protect pedestrians to cross. And again, the way it operates, the motorist has to yield to pedestrians. And once they're through, then they can proceed on. So it's not, it's not the delays that you typically see at a traffic light where you have to have, wait for a long cycle of flashing, you know, a white man and a flashing hand, and then a steady hand, and then all red clearance, and all that that's built into stopping the traffic on the main line. The way that, reason these are popular is because it enables a safe crossing. But once that pedestrian gets across, the motorist is permitted to go on their way again.
I would, I, I respect Ron a whole lot. I mean, he's, he's been a very good businessman for Lower South for quite, quite a long time. In fact, I bought a few cars from him. But I would, would want to put him in a position where, you know, if something like that happens, you know, somebody gets hit or whatever, I think he would feel terrible about something like that. And I, I just have some concerns about it. It doesn't mean I'm opposed to it, I'm just concerned if, if there's, if there's a different or better way to do it. I think, I just think it's, it's dangerous, is what would be the word I'd use, to, to expect that nobody's going to get hurt in this environment. I mean, you got an island set in the middle, and that's, that's okay. But now you've got pass, you've got drivers that are running red lights. Now, are they going to run this light also? Now, are they going to run this light also? I mean, again, Ron, I don't want to be a negative thought.
I understand, but right now we have nothing. We have the Indianapolis Speedway on Bustleton Avenue, people lying by there. So we have this, at least, I would rather, I think a light would be better myself, of course, but if you have this, it certainly will slow down traffic, there'll be arms there where the vehicle will have to slow itself down if somebody wants to cross or kids want to cross or whatever. So I think it's better than what we have now and we have a rare opportunity, we've got this $150,000 grant, so I think it's, I mean, my vote is we should go for it and try to get it and if we fit it out, which is up to you, and maybe it comes in less and it wouldn't cost anything.
No, you're real comfortable with this then? You see the traffic going by every day and you see the past people walking across the road every day and you're very convinced that this is the right thing to do?
Even myself, I have some fears of crossing there to go over to the service department, especially when traffic is really moving, because if I'm stuck in the middle, it's not pleasant to wait, you know, till, to go over, it's somewhat scary. And it's, and there's more traffic and more people moving to suburbia to, you know, Northampton and up there, so there's a lot of people going back and forth every day. So I think it's a safety concern, I think it would certainly enhance and much, right now we have nothing, so it's dangerous.
Joe, is there a time limit to the grant?
No. If there was a time limit, we would have lost the money by now. We got this money back in, I think, 2016.
Frank Dylan, just one more question. I mean, from a legal standpoint, and I know you're not a PennDOT attorney or anything, but from a legal standpoint, I don't know, could you just give us a thumbnail sketch of, you know, what we're looking at if the township has this money available for the grant and we don't do it versus the money being there and we do do it?
Well, you're not compelled to do it, but you know, Joe designed it and Joe's given the opinion, I think we all know it's going safe, the chief, prior chief asked for it. I'm sure the chief agrees that people speed and this would be safer. And I don't think it's a liability issue, but I think, I think while I'm sitting here listening, I think it's, the general consensus that it would be a significant improvement. Joe Fialka, it's much more to complete the design and you've gone this far, it just seems to me it would make sense to invest in the, you know, the, whatever additional design is and get a quote and then you'll be in a position to make a decision. If it's out of line, you say no, but you've gone this far, you know, with Ron's money, your money, it doesn't make sense, I'm not supposed to give opinions, but it doesn't make sense to stop now until you see what the final number is.
Well, what would our liability be, Frank? I mean, suppose somebody, God forbid, gets hit and killed or whatever off of this island, what is our responsibility and what is Ron's responsibility also? I mean, if we're throwing him in the bus here, that's not fair either.
No, well, it's, hey, Ron's got a business, people walk the street, that's not his issue, but one of the things we're talking about tonight is compensation for John McMenman for testifying in a case where we were aware of an unsafe condition and did nothing about it. And so we're involved in a lawsuit, whether or not it's proper or not, we'll find out when they litigate it, but I think it's fairly safe to say, we all know dashing across that street is not very safe.
Okay. If you need a figure, Ed, it's a half a billion. Pennsylvania municipalities are capped at a half million dollars, you can't sue a municipality for more than a half million.
That's correct.
Is it 250 or 500?
250 is the state, 500 the local municipality.
So PennDOT ironically has less exposure than we do. But Ron has more because Ron doesn't have any immunity at all. Sorry, Ron.
I understand, it's business, right?
Yeah. I don't know, my sense is we just see if we can get some bids and see if we can get the additional information and then go out for bid and try to get the $175. I mean, that looks after Ron and he seems to be pretty comfortable with this and he's the businessman and he's got a lot to be responsible for with this thing, at least I think so.
All right, so then we'll move on and then we'll move on to the next group of issues that we have. Thank you, gentlemen, Joe, you'll be staying for the 7:30 meeting? Yeah. All right, thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
All right, Matt, do you want to go over your topics? Matt?
Yep, good evening. So just wanted to come to the board tonight at workshop, I'm here with John Genovese and Tri-State Engineers. One thing that we're going to discuss at the manager's report is the authorization to have Tri-State Engineers prepare a RFP for the proposed building of the Dolphin Swim Club. If you remember a few years ago when we took out the bond money, the Dolphin Swim Club bathroom, gatehouse, office, that not only serviced the Dolphin Swim Club, but it would also service the park. So it would make it like a three-season building, we would be able to use it in the fall when sports begin, or the fall, the summer for the pool and for the park and also in the spring. Obviously, you wouldn't be able to gain access into the swim club, but you would be able to use the restrooms in the park. This will also provide a gatehouse, an office, and to the management, we're going to request that the board authorize Tri-State Engineers to prepare an RFP for that project. We don't have an exact cost nailed down of what that will be, but that will come after the RFP, once we get working with the market tax and make sure that it's a building that is due to our needs and within our budget.
And Matt, what is the estimated cost for the RFP that you were saying?
Right now, in Fund 20, we have $800,000 designated for the new structure. That would definitely be something that we tried to stay on target with. In comparison to some other aquatic facilities, I reached out to Hatfield Aquatic Center, I don't know if any of you have ever been there, it's a really nice aquatic center. They have a very similar structure that's also located within a public park, so they can utilize both the restrooms and the snack stand, more of a three-season capacity and then the pool and the restrooms with the showers, while the aquatic facility itself they came in at around 1.2 million, but it's also a much larger facility. They facilitate swim teams and swim practices. So ours would be much more scaled down, closer to size that we are now, just new.
Any questions for Matt then, with regard to the approval tonight for the RFP?
I'm also here with John Genovese, we're socially distancing in the conference room.
So what do we need then?
We'll just do, in the manager's report, we'll do an approval, so to allow for the RFP, which could be like a projected cost of anywhere two to three grand for the RFP.
Oh, okay, all right.
All right, Matt, anything else, Matt, real quick?
Yep, just wanted to give you guys a heads up, back in, early in the year, January, February, Wheeler Brader was able to donate $7,000 to the township and at that time, we identified our need for new signs. Sign over at Russell Elliott, right now it's a single-sided sign and it's also dilapidated. We're going to, we've already gotten one quote, we're going to be getting another to replace the sign at Russell Elliott Memorial Park. I've already talked to Mike Italia and discussed the permitting process and the location of that sign. So in doing so, we're also going to improve the Play Wiki Farm sign, that sign needs new posts and we're also going to remove the lower marquee, being that now they put all of their communication online with their website and on their Facebook. So in the, once this sign is ordered, it's going to take a few weeks for them to make it, following the arrival of the sign, our current signs, if you see them down for, you know, a few days or up to a week even, we're going to be doing the work in-house through Public Works, so don't be alarmed if you realize the sign has been taken down at the park, it's going to be put back up. The Play Wiki one, we're ordering new posts and new hardware, the Russell Elliott sign, we're ordering a new sign and it's going to be double-sided. We're going to spruce up the areas around them with some nice plantings and some flowerbed.
Okay, thank you, Matt, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
All right. Chief, did you have any other comments, chief, that you wanted to make for tonight?
I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay, no problem, just wanted to double check. What I'm going to do is kind of go through it real quick and leave the board a few minutes if they have any questions, but a few items for tonight, that I will be speaking on in the manager's report is the Buck Road over the Turpike, they got a bridge replacement project that's coming up. I'm going to touch base quickly on our financial position as far as this being the COVID year. Additionally, I want to go, actually, I'm just going to briefly mention this, this is not for the manager's report, it's just administrative house cleaning. Pete did some work, it got us some five, basically five prices with regard to our new electricity supplier and street lighting, end up being about, on the general service side, a potential 4,000 in savings Pete came up with, on the street lighting side, about 10K in savings there, and then also for the copier machine leases, I believe that's another 4,000 or 4,200 in savings, with Pete going out and getting prices, I believe, for four, from four different vendors. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that and Pete, thank you for your good work on there, we got multiple quotes, but this is just administrative house cleaning, so I would be executing these contracts. The one is for the electric supplier and that's only a 12-month and then the lease is just for copiers, which would include the copier room up here, in the administration building, the zoning office, finance, and I believe the police would get a new copier also. You all right with that, chief? New copier?
Yep, thank you.
All right. Okay, for tonight's meeting, you also have the one for the conflict solicitor, that is on the agenda tonight and the vendor in question is Grim B. N. Thatcher, who's a local vendor out of Bucks County or a law firm out of Bucks County.
The conflict solicitor that we're looking at, I saw the date on that was November 2019, so were they one of the ones that had put in to be considered for, to be the conflict solicitor at the reorg for this year?
They put in for, I believe in Jan, I'm sorry, for this, November 2019, I think it is.
Right, so, okay.
So they've been around for a while, they've been around for a while, actually, the gentleman here has 14 years of experience, they got seven attorneys in that municipal department and one of the things that stood out for me and what I liked about it in looking at their, it says conflicts of interest, they believe it's in the best interest of their municipal clients to decline the opportunity to represent developers. It's simply not possible in their opinion to aggressively represent a township in the review, in the review of a development or land development plans, while hoping to work for that same developer in other municipalities. So they just traditionally represent municipalities, which is for the township.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that's basically all I have here, I'll go through the manager's report, but if you've got any other things that you wanted to discuss, we're in 7:22.
Well, we're supposed to, we're also going to discuss, last month you authorized John McMenman to be the representative of the township, had the trial of SHA, administrator of the estate versus, we discussed compensation for John, I spoke to him, he needs him to prepare and he needs him to sit through trial. I asked Joe what John's hourly rate was after the benefit, when we talked, is that the rate? Somebody's.
A lot of feedback.
Whoever else is on, please do.
Okay. Now there it goes. Anyhow, Mr. McMenman's rate, time of retirement is 55.26 an hour and my recommendation is to pay off his hourly rate for the times and his expenses for the time he's needed for trial and preparation.
They started the meeting before 7:30.
This is the work session, it's not a formal meeting yet.
Frank, could you repeat that hourly rate because you were stepped on? 55.26?
Correct.
Thank you.
And one of the, I know I've been asked this question, so I'll just answer it, why couldn't we just subpoena him to testify and force him to be there? And the answer is, he's going to be there as our representative in a formal capacity and the attorney wants him there to sit through the trial, be our representative and not be a subpoena fact witness. John worked with his attorney through the investigation and has all the knowledge that the rest of us don't regarding this matter.
And I believe the accident actually took place in November of 2013, so it's kind of dated.
Yes. November 14th, 2013.
All right, thank you, Frank. Is there anything else for anybody?
I want you to know how zoning is progressing, Mike? Is Mike Italian?
Yeah, he was on, Mike?
Mike, well, I know Mike's going to take me to college, so I don't know if he can be traveling.
Hey, it's Mike, I'm here.
Mike, I wanted to know how zoning is progressing?
It's going great, everything's moving along, you got some stuff on your agenda tonight with me, with some waivers and things like that. Got some property maintenance, we're starting to tackle that and get a comprehensive, you know, plan there with Kevin and Gis.
Well, he just hit a dead spot. Well, I can tell you it's going a whole lot better from my view. Uh, well, I can tell you it's going a whole lot better, from my view.
I don't know if you can hear us, uh, Mike, thanks, Mike, I think we got cut off.
Hey, it's Mike.
Oh, I hear you.
I don't know where I dropped, but th- things are going well. Um, and, uh, you know, we're getting a comprehensive plan together for property maintenance, getting things into court system, uh, to get, uh, things actually accomplished. So, i- it's, it's, it's gonna, it's a marathon, not a sprint, I can tell you that much.
Thanks, Mike, and the court system is probably behind, obviously.
Yeah, they keep continuing things on us, so it's, it's getting a little frustrating on some of the cases, so.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Well, 7:28, so, you got about two minutes.
Everybody make their, their runs if they need to make it.
How's Public Works doing?
He actually, he actually said he was making a run, he just ran by my office.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Ed. Mark, Mark's been a pleasure to work with. Yeah, go ahead, Mark, go ahead. It's fine, there's only a minute left, yeah, yeah. It was just said, it, it was, I think it's-
No, the, the courts, now, the courts are a bit, the courts are a good job of free and profession. They're doing it together.
Just, just for your info, we are still being recorded, so you know.
Anything else for now?
No, that, that's it, we're, we're almost at 7:30.
Okay.
All right. That's 'cause I put some in it, I guess, so.
I'll go 7:30 if everybody's back.
Yes.
Joe, you're here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And everybody's good to begin the regular meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Evening and welcome to the Wednesday, August 12th, 2020, Lower Southampton Township Meeting. The board is supervisors. Tonight's meeting is being held virtually via teleconference and advertised as such, along with the agenda. Um, to begin with the meeting, will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, before tonight's meeting, the board met in a work session at 6:30 PM. Um, in tonight's work discussion, the board discussed a variety of matters. Um, we spent some time discussing the auto grant, which is the red light enforcement grant, um, for a mid-block crosswalk, uh, to be possibly placed, uh, in front of Colonial Nissan just north of Bridle Path Lane on Bustleton Pike. We also heard, uh, an update from Mr. Gilbert, the Parks and Recreation Director, about improvements, possible improvements to the restrooms and some outbuildings at the Dolphin Club and, um, looking into the cost of that. Uh, we also, um, received an update from Mr. Gilbert about some sign replacement that'll take place at Russell Elliott Memorial Park and at Play Wiki Farm. Those signs are falling in on themselves and rotting and they're long overdue to be replaced. Um, we also heard, uh, a, uh, an update, I guess a synopsis of what'll be presented in the manager's report. So, Mr. Gatto will be presenting what we talked about in his manager's report near the end of the meeting. Um, we spoke to and heard a, uh, proposal from, uh, our solicitor regarding some upcoming, uh, requested court appearances from Mr. McMenamin, our former township manager, at a lawsuit that was, at a, a court hearing and some litigation stemming from a lawsuit that was filed against Lower Southampton Township as a result of a motor vehicle accident that occurred back in 2013. And finally, we heard, uh, an update from our new zoning officer, Mr. Italia, um, and what's been going on, uh, in regard to some things that'll be presented to the board tonight. Um, there was no executive session that was held tonight. Uh, we weren't right up until the beginning of this meeting. Uh, first up on tonight's, uh, agenda would be public comment. The public was invited to send any comments or questions in via email. Mr. Gatto, uh, is there anything to be read into the record?
Yes, there are two. Okay. The first one is, uh, Ms. Connie Bahrain, 115 Front Street, um, Feasterville, regarding the appointment of former township manager John McMenamin to represent the township in an upcoming trial of a civil suit brought on by, by the estate of a Northampton man killed in a motorcycle accident in Lower Southampton. At this last meeting, it was noted that the board scheduled the vote sometime in August to set the compensation for Mr. McMenamin to attend and testify at trial. If the township's insurance carrier sought, i- if the township's insurance carrier sought the township's assistance with its defense, will the insurance carrier be compensating Mr. McMenamin for his attendance and testimony at the trial? If not, why?
Uh, Mr. Gilbert?
Uh, the answer is no. He's being, he's being hired by us to be our representative. Um, I suspect you could ask that question, but I, I suspect that the policy doesn't provide that. But I can, I can get you an answer for that, but, uh, you can certainly ask and take a look at the policy and see. But, uh, that was not part of the discussion, but we, I'll get that answer for you.
And then-
Thank you.
The second, the second is from Maureen Gorman on Siles Ave, uh, Siles Avenue. Uh, I just wanted to circle back about a question I posed in a mea- in a meeting or a few meetings ago. What is the status on the laundromat at the corner of Brownsville and Elmwood? It has been abandoned for years and is really an eyesore. I apologize if I missed the answer to my question at the last meeting. Um, I, I mean, this is all part of the streetscape, uh, project that we're trying to undertake over there on that stretch of those two blocks over there. As far as the laundromat, it's not operational. Um, I, wh- what we could do is check and see what things that are possible, possible violations there. But other than that, the, the owner's entitled to the, you know, to, to, basically to ownership, free ownership of the property or the premises. So, but, um-
So, someone will take a look at that, Joe?
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll, I'll let Mike and see if there's any type of violations outstanding on the property or premises, just to make sure.
Thank you.
All right, I noted it, not a problem.
Thank you, Mike. That's, that's all for public comment.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, first up tonight on the agenda is, uh, item number one, the consent agenda, which is rather lengthy since we have meetings once a month in the summer. Item 1A, approval of the minutes from the July 8th, 2020 meeting. Item 1B, approval of accounts payable, August 12th, 2020. Item 1C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, August 12th, 2020. Item 1D, ratify approval of summer camp refunds, July 10th, 2020. Item 1E, ratify approval of accounts payable, July 22nd, 2020. Item 1F, ratify approval of certain recurring monthly bills, July 22nd, 2020. Item 1G, ratify approval of Dolphin Swim Club refunds, July 24th, 2020. Item 1H, approval of escrow release in the amount of $5,000 for LG&amp;K Inc., um, also known as Arby's, 245 East Street Road, Feasterville, Pennsylvania. And item 1I, approval of escrow release, number one, in the amount of $553,827.45 for Republic Bank, 305 East Street Road, Feasterville, PA. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Cummings, second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Uh, as we've been doing in these teleconference virtual meetings, we'll do a roll call vote and alphabetical work. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Koutaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you, and Ray Weldy, yes. Also, motion for the consent agenda passes with a vote of 5-0. Number two on tonight's agenda is approval of the revised plans and stipulation agreement for the Bucks County Intermediate Unit located at 7 School Lane, uh, in Feasterville, um, which is also known as the, uh, former Lower Southampton Elementary School.
So, Don, Don Williams would be taking this, Don, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here, but for whatever reason, I can't get my camera to turn on.
That's fine.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, what we have before you this evening is a proposed stipulation and agreement to resolve the zoning appeal and the land use appeal that were filed, that were both filed by the Bucks County Intermediate Unit with regard to the property known as the, uh, Lower Southampton Elementary School that the Bucks County Intermediate Unit is currently using, uh, and, and has been using. Uh, what is before you is a culmination of a better part of a year of legal and engineering efforts to, uh, get a plan that the board, uh, gave, uh, its consent to move forward with, uh, and back in April of 2019. Uh, that has been done, the plan was submitted to the township. It was reviewed by the township engineer. The township engineer had identified a number of different issues. There was a meeting that was held to discuss, review these issues. And what this stipulation does is address those respective, uh, issues that were raised by the engineer. And it's Mr. Turner, I believe he's on this evening, he can speak to it. And it, and it lays out all the, uh, relief that would be necessary to proceed with the construction of the proposed improvements. If approved this evening, the, the stipulation agreement would then be considered by the Bucks County IU as well as the Nishamie School District, as they're both parties to the action. In addition, I understand that the zoning hearing board, because they were involved with the zoning appeal, uh, participated and reviewed the, uh, proposed stipulation and the plans and, uh, had consented to its approval as well. Uh, and I guess finally, I will say that it also went to the Lower Southampton Planning Commission for review and comment. And I think Mr. Mc- uh, Italia can talk to, speak to that issue.
Correct, yeah, the zoning hearing board, um, they signed off on the stipulation, no issues. The planning commission, the only discussion from the neighborhood was Colonial Drive, I believe it is. Um, they are interested in some sort of restriction on traffic during school hours, both in the morning and afternoon. Other than that, the comments were positive and, uh, the planning commission had no issues with it.
And I may just also add that the, the stipulation also addresses something that was raised, uh, I'll say post-appeal. And, and it's been included and agreed to by the, uh, the Shamie School District. And that is the granting of a license agreement to the, uh, to the township for the sign that is located at the intersection of Bridgetown Pike and School Lane. You may recall there's a directional sign or identific- identifying sign at that intersection. And they've agreed to formally give us a license agreement to allow that sign to remain perpetuity. Or, or, or unless there's cause that they needed to use the property, had to be removed for their, for their use. But, uh, that, that's the way it was designed. The actual stipulation agreement has five different exhibits. The first exhibit A is the zoning appeal. Second exhibit B is the land use appeal. The third exhibit C is the, uh, original, the preliminary slash final plan submitted by the Bucks County IU. Uh, that was dated January 31st, 2020. Exhibit D is the tri-state engineer's review of that plan. And exhibit E is the actual license agreement for the sign.
Can, can I ask you a question there, Mr. Turetti? It's Ray Weldy.
Yeah, this is Don Williams.
Oh, I thought, okay, Don.
John is on the line or not?
Okay, Don, I have a question, uh, back on, I think it was June the 5th, I could be wrong. Um, there was a large meeting held at tri-state engineers about approximately 60 points of contention with parking and stormwater and on and on and on and on. And, um, I, I was just wondering if, I, I see Mr. Genovese is here, I don't know if he had anything to do with this project. I didn't want to put him on the spot because Carl was handling it before. Have all of those concerns been addressed and, and alleviated?
I'm on the line.
Oh, hi, Carl.
I couldn't get my, I couldn't get on the computer with the cameras, so.
Great.
But yes, um, what we've done, we've looked at, um, the, the, the engineer, the engineers, um, on the school board, we've basically gone back and forth and whittled it down to, um, they basically agreed to do and show them or, and revise the plan, um, for, I would say about 99.9% of what was requested. The only remaining issues would have been recommendations. Um, and, you know, if they chose to do it, fine, if not, uh, we weren't really going to, um, chastise them for it. So, they've basically done everything that they can do to get to where they are. There's nothing, I mean, there's, I couldn't, you know, to make the site work. They've done just about everything that they can do, um, and tried to give us everything that we've asked for, um, to get to that point.
So, Carl, you're pretty comfortable then with this stipulation?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And, and Joe Fiaco, I think you had something, if you want to weigh in on the park, some, a parking concern, maybe?
Yeah, I, I found out that this was on the agenda tonight and I had the last, I had sent some recommendations to the engineer and I had not heard back. So, he sent me a set of plans and he, I believe he addressed all of my concerns with the exception of, I had been asking to have the back two parking lots connected so that you wouldn't need to make a K-turn on the, the far lot. It's just, it would just clean things up if, if you were able to, uh, drive around without backing up. But keeping in mind that this is a retrofit project, it's not a new design. You know, I'm willing to, you know, allow it to go as it is, I mean, not that I have control anyway. But it's a existing school property, they're repurposing the parking lots there. The designer is concerned about the 9% to 10% slope. I felt like the 9%, 10% slope is not set by better traffic circulation. So, that was the only remaining, uh, recommendation that I had made that just kind of didn't go anywhere.
Thanks, Joe. Any other board members have any questions?
Is it, is this, is this final now? I know that Carl was very much involved in this at the time we had that meeting. Uh, have all of those things been resolved? And I, I, I've heard what he's said so far, and it's 99%. What's, what's the one, that one half or 1/10 to 1%? And has the zoning office, are they necessarily involved at this? And has the zoning office, are they necessarily involved at this, at this point for this? And Joe, is there any other issues that you need to resolve? I know you got one that you never got a response for. Just curious about what's happening? Why can't we approve this thing?
Well, this is Carl. And that 1%, had to do with the traffic engineers' comments.
Oh, okay.
All the other issues have been resolved and I see Matt there. So the, one of the issues that were, was, was, was a little bit tedious and we spent a lot of time with, had to do with the baseball field.
Right.
And we went back and forth trying to see what we could do to shrink it. And when we shrunk it and couldn't make it work because it went back up into the school and they couldn't move it back there. So we came to an agreement to put some underdrained pipe in and actually do a little more compaction. So the, that area would always be dropped. So if anyone's playing any kind of ball here, they won't be going into a squishy area. And they're going to do that at both parts of the, where the drain spaces are.
Have we heard from any?
The 1% was just the traffic engineers' concerns or the recommendations. And I think that, I think after this, I think it goes to the record plan and then the zoning officer gets it.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could just, I'm sorry, if I could just talk procedurally what I'd see happening next. If this board approves the stipulation agreement this evening, it'll then be considered by the Bucks County IU and the Nishamie School District later this month. I would anticipate they both would agree it, agree to it. As it's been negotiated by both parties and it's before you this evening for your consideration. From there, it would be, it would be submitted to the Court of Common Pleas to resolve the two appeals. And an order would be entered, basically approving the stipulation agreement as agreed to by the parties. From there, Carl would probably take one more look at it to make sure that the plan has been cleaned up the way it should be in accordance with the stipulation. And then I would anticipate that back in September, it would come back to the board for the final approval. I spoke to John Turetti early today, the solicitor for the Nishamie School District, and he agreed that that would, that was the approach that he had in mind as well. So step one is basically approving the stipulation agreement and hoping that the Nishamie School District as well as Bucks County IU approve it as well.
Ray, I have one, one question, or not even a question, just one comment. I'm always very impressed with all the work Mr. Turner always puts into everything and I just want to personally thank him for putting all the effort that he actually did with this project. Thank you very much, Mr. Turner.
You're welcome.
Joe, do you have anything else that you're waiting for? I know nobody called you back, but is that something that we need to consider? Joe? Joe Fiaco?
Yeah. No, I think, again, I guess it was just an oversight. I'd sent some recommendations to the designer and I just never, never got back. For those, anybody on the call or this meeting realizes how bad conditions are at Lower Southampton, what they are proposing is tremendous improvement over, you know, what we've been living with. So, you know, kudos to the people involved and I think we're on the way to eliminate a big headache for a lot of people who are dealing with the headaches at Lower Southampton.
You're satisfied with what you needed to get?
Yeah, like I said, I wanted to see better circulation, but again, this is not a new project. This is a repurposing of a public property. So if, 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 you know, the opportunity is going to pass, it's passed. It just, it just won't be as good if you, when you go to the far parking lot, you'll have to take a K-turn and come back instead of, you know, making a, you know, better circulation for anybody using the site, that's all. It's really, it's not a matter of not meeting a standard, it's just a matter of, you know, being less desirable. So, again, it's.
Big change that need to be made or what?
What's that?
Is that a big change that could be made easily or?
I don't, I don't understand the hesitation because it's just making a connection between the two lots. The engineer, the engineer is saying that the 9% to 10% slope is why he doesn't want to make the connection. And I think the 9% to 10% slope is not bad compared to better circulation of the property. Again, speaking as a traffic.
Yeah, well, that's why we have you, right?
Right.
Well, does it make sense to hold this up until you're satisfied?
Again, it's their, it's their property, so it's, it's the, it's the Nishamie School District, the IU, the people are going to be dealing with the lack of circulation aren't the rest of the public. It's the employees working at the site. So if they're adamant about not doing it, I'm willing to allow them not to do it.
Now, Joe, would that K-turn only be necessary if all the parking slots were full? Or is that for everyone that goes into that lot that doesn't empty into the other lot?
Right. I guess whoever pulls into a lot, you just back out and go where you came from.
Right.
Went to that lot and you don't have a spot available, then you got to make a K-turn and enter the aisle and come back out again.
Okay.
If they connected the two, you could just circle around and continue on and no problem. Again, it's an inconvenience for their employees. It would improve the traffic circulation on site, but I don't think it's worth holding up all the major improvements being proposed here to alleviate all that congestion that we, that we are realizing in the vicinity of the township facilities.
Thank you.
Mr. Carl Turetti, if I could say one more thing?
Sure.
I don't want to undermine the planning board meeting, but the residents at that meeting were very, very concerned about, I guess that was that Colonial Drive.
Yeah.
Where people were coming in and parking in their driveway to go to the school, parking and blocking driveways. So that they wanted some type of, I guess, Mike had an idea that I thought was great and maybe you can share that a little more.
So, so what I've done in, I did in Haprow with the new elementary school, same builder, Dewey, Terraform Engineering. We created basically a do not enter or an exit out only on feeder roads into the Crooked Bill at Elementary School. There was some there existing beforehand. We expanded those a little bit because the residents were also dealing with the same issue with the parents, the parents picking kids up and parking in front of driveways and things like that because they didn't want to get stuck in a loop. So my recommendation would be to you as the board of supervisors is down the road before this project is said and done, is the possibly passing some sort of ordinance addressing Colonial Drive specifically, saying that it is off limits to through traffic from the hours of like, let's say, 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning. And then during school, you know, during school drop-off and pickup hours. So whatever those would align with the IU. That would be my recommendation.
So that would apply to everyone except the residents then of that street?
That's correct. And it would be enforceable by the police department if for some reason, you know, parents are sitting there picking up their kids or whatnot. It would basically be a do not enter during these hours. And it works very well in Haprow.
Okay.
It seems to me we should take that into consideration before we do anything. I hate to be a bad guy, but, you know, we've been going long enough with this thing now. And if we can't get the whole thing resolved, that, that doesn't look well for us, I think. What's next? What do we have to do next?
Don?
Well, procedurally, either someone can make a motion if they're inclined to do this though and take a vote on it, or you could continue to a future date, table, whatever, whatever your preference is. My understanding is if we don't get this done in the fairly near future, we're going to be out of the construction season, you're going to live with the traffic conditions for another year. I, in my opinion, the ordinance issue can be resolved at the next meeting if we direct our solicitor to prepare that ordinance that they, I think was Michael just talking about.
Correct. And the planning commission was amendable to that.
Right. So that would be just, that's just an ordinance, you know, not, it doesn't sound like it's a terribly difficult one to put together and Mr. Dillon can certainly whip that up quickly.
Yeah, I'm not commenting because of the, my partners involved for the school district, but that is an issue that the chief and I would be able to figure out quickly to come up with the appropriate parking ordinance.
So before this project was completed, then that ordinance and those signs would be in place? Theoretically.
Yes, that's the intent.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to see us do that, by the way, just for my two cents, to make sure that the whole thing is resolved before we vote on anything.
Well, can we make, can we make an addendum or something to the motion tonight? That it's subject to an ordinance being developed and signs being posted before the completion of the project?
My comment, Ray, is that you, the board, controls that. If you approve this stipulation, you, the board, has the authority to enact the ordinance or not. You're in absolute control of that situation. That's not dependent on any of the other signatures to the agreement. That's solely within your power.
And I agree with Frank on that 100%. And actually, you could, this evening, if in fact this would be approved, you could immediately then direct the solicitor to prepare the necessary ordinance to address the issues that were raised at the planning commission as set forth by Mr. Italia.
So we, we could, we could make a motion, should vote on that motion, should that motion be approved, then we could also direct the solicitor to meet with our zoning officer and develop an ordinance prior to the next public meeting with the chief of police that would allow us to control the situation on Colonial Drive?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'd like to see Joe Fiaco involved with this process also, just to make sure that it's going to solve the issue that he's already discussed.
Well, Joe's issue was with parking on the lot, right? Not Colonial Drive?
Uh, okay, but he has, he has another issue. Can we solve that one at the same time?
Forgive me, I'm not sure what the procedure of the board is. This is David Gahn, I'm the solicitor for the IU in this matter. Can I just address what the supervisors raised?
Absolutely.
So there, from the IU's position, and Don Williams did put it out pretty well, there are three concerns. We're already up against the timeline for getting this project to move. And I think Mr. Fioco will agree that although there's a difference between him and our engineer regarding what the best line would be and the impact of that slope, that in fact, it does not violate any portion of your land development ordinance or zoning code to do the plan that we're proposing. That is, we don't need a waiver for this. This is a recommendation from Mr. Fioco that he thinks would be a better design and he may well be right, but as he also pointed out, it's only going to affect the IU's own employees. And then lastly, we're reluctant to make any additional plans, changes to the plan right now, partly because the zoning hearing board has already seen it, your planning commission has already seen it. And, and really, you know, if we make any significant revisions to the plan at this point, there's no way we improve the traffic conditions. And that's the idea here. And everybody agrees. Everybody agrees that this plan before you tonight will meaningfully improve the traffic situation that exists at the site right now in a meaningful way. And in fact, even for Colonial Drive, while I think the ordinance is a great idea, I also think some of that problem is going to disappear as soon as this project is done. You won't even need that traffic control as much as you might right now because we're going to get so much of that traffic off the street to begin with. So I, you know, not surprisingly, I'm urging you to approve that, the stipulation tonight so that actually move ahead with bids and try and get this problem improved as quickly as possible. And, and I think we're in a position right now where we can do that and everybody agrees it's going to be a big improvement. Thanks.
So, okay, Frank?
If you want to, well, if you want to address Ed's concern, make the motion authorize the preparation of an ordinance dealing with Colonial Drive. And so that takes care of that. And then Don can make the recommendation, I assume, to authorize the execution of this, approve the stipulation.
Does that sound okay with the other board members?
I think I'm okay with it, Ray.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion, the first motion on this matter, to direct the solicitor, the zoning officer and the chief of police to collaborate and develop an ordinance to help address any potential through-traffic problems and parking problems on Colonial Drive should the project be approved. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that, Ray.
Okay, I, it was made by Weldy, seconded by Mr. Shannon. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
She's in mood.
Sue, you okay?
Yes.
What was your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, yes. So that motion to develop an ordinance to, to address any through-traffic problems in the future and parking problems on Colonial Drive has been passed with a vote of 5-0. And then, Don, do you want to phrase the wording for the motion for the stipulation?
I can, it's very simple. It would be a proposed motion to approve a stipulation agreement to resolve the two pending, the pending zoning appeal and the pending land use appeal in the Court of Common Pleas of Bucks County. And with the parties to the agreement being as set forth in the actual document that are listed as Lower Southampton Township, Bucks County Intermediate Unit 22, Nishamie School District, and the Lower Southampton Township Zoning Hearing Board.
Thank you, Don. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make a question.
Motion made by Ms. Cummings, a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. Roll call. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon? Ed?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy? I vote yes. So that motion passes for the stipulation agreement with a vote of 5-0. Thank you, everyone.
Very good.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, consideration of waiver of land development for Chase Bank, 1045 Busselton Pike, Feasterville, PA. Parcel number eight, I'm sorry, S-21-00. parcel number eight, I'm sorry, S-21-007-189 and 21-007-187-2. And I believe this is for the ATM machine in the Feasterville Plaza.
Mike, you want to talk, or do you want me to talk?
Yeah, I can just, I can catch it real quick and then you can have it. Yeah, so this is for the ATM Chase Bank, putting it near Bell's Market, like more closer to Burger King for a lack of a navigational beacon there. Everything's pretty straightforward. Carl did his review letter, I'm addressing the zoning issue. There's some interpretation I'm working through, I'll be looping Carl in with the applicant and whatnot. And we're going to try and get that addressed. But yes, Frank, have at it.
I, I've talked, I've sent an email to Carl and to Mike today, raising the issue of whether or not this should be deferred until they got the zoning approval. Mike made the recommendation, I didn't hear from Carl, that we approved the waiver of land development subject to the condition that they meet all the conditions in Mr. Turner's review letter, which includes potentially getting some variance.
Frank, would you? Frank, would you be able to describe this, this, or Mike, this, this ATM? It appears it's an unmanned, just strictly ATM machine type of drive-through operation?
Yeah, kind of, yeah, it's two lanes. It's just a standalone ATM, there's no teller hiding inside. You know, it's, you're seeing them pop up all over the place, Wells Fargo, Chase, Bank of America, pretty standard. Not a big issue. Carl had some issues about, you know, some turning and queuing of the cars, which we addressed with the applicant. I can let Carl speak to that, but they're pretty standard anymore.
There, there's one of the flower shops in Langhorne, which I use all the time, just pulling and using, big convenient.
Is, I mean, is it a 24/7 operation?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I, you know, I've heard others, you know, and if, if, that are familiar with the layout down there, which I think everybody is, you know, when you pull into the Feasterville Plaza across from Ruth Street, when you pull in at that light, you kind of go down a little bit of a slope, and then back in there to the right, adjacent to the accountant's office in Burger King, is where this would be located, correct?
Yes.
Now, that sits somewhat below the road level and is surrounded by hedges and some bushes and vegetation and stuff. And I mean, you know, probably the chief has the same concerns, you know, from like a, a, a security and a police standpoint is, what kind of security or what kind of assurances would there be for someone from, anytime really, but especially at night, that would pull up and use that ATM, other than everything's being recorded? You know, what, what kind of assistance would there be? Should they become involved in a situation where they're beaten or robbed or carjacked or something like that, other than hopefully holding on to their cellphone? You know, is there any surveillance? Is there an alarm there? Is there, I don't know, you know?
I don't know, is the applicant on the, is the applicant on the call? They were invited.
Well, I, I got an email or a text during this meeting from the, the attorney representing Chase, I think it's Chase, saying if there's any questions that can't be answered, just continue it to the next month and you'd address the concerns.
My name is Barry Glassman. I represent, I represent the applicant if I'm able to speak.
Please.
Actually, I'm, so Barry Glassman, I am the construction manager for Security Vault Works. We are the contractor hired by Chase to build quite a few of these, as you pointed out. I handle the whole Northeast for Chase. I'm putting up about 35 of these throughout the Northeast and New England. To answer the question specifically about security, we certainly make sure, and our plan calls for it, very, well, a, a light pole and lighting that meets the standards for the state. But the ATM itself, the canopy that covers just the ATM area, you see, you can see right through it. So it's a, two legs and a roof. This canopy is very well lit. So we see that when people are driving into the parking lot, there is ample lighting. Then when they enter the ATM, I'm going to call it a cul-de-sac. When they enter that cul-de-sac parking area, there is additional lighting to aid them as they drive around, and then when they get to the ATM, it is very well lit. So there is lighting probably as much as any ATM similar that might be connected to a bank where customers drive up to the side of a bank or the back of a bank to use a drive-up ATM. So it, it's designed very much like all those others that are already out there, where customers are not necessarily next to a highway, but it is very well lit. And so I hope that answers your question.
Well, I have, I have a question with that. But it is surrounded by hedges. Correct, there's, there's hedges around it. If I'm picturing, because I took a drive around there, because I'm trying to picture exactly where this is. And is it, when you go into the driveway and you make a right, and that area right there?
So I, right, I agree with you that one side is, there are tall plantings. The other side are very low hedges. I was there myself. They're not covering or blocking visibility at all where cars could park now and potentially have had a security issue. Or if they were to go there to visit the ATM, you can see right past those hedges. And the additional lighting from the parking lot is also there from the rest of the property. So I agree with you, there are very low hedges that are there and maintained by the owner, very low. So cars are not hidden. And then there is border foliage between the building next to it. That, that's all the foliage that I have seen there.
Can that be removed?
Do you, the low hedges that only go up to about your knee?
Well, they do.
I don't know, I don't know if I agree with that.
No, not that.
I'm not sure of the height. I, I didn't mean to aggravate.
Those hedges are a little higher.
Okay.
And I don't think that you can see through, you can't see over them.
And I think if you pulled in there like tomorrow, and I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think if you pulled into that lot tomorrow and there was two or three cars parked on the other side of those hedges where this ATM would be, you would be challenged to see more than half of those cars. I mean, it's, it's a very difficult site situation in an isolated shopping center after 10 o'clock at night, other than maybe Bell's Market.
And I agree, I, I agree those hedges should be trimmed back. I agree, and I'm sure the landlord would not argue, because in the past, I don't know if you can see it all. I agree with you, but in the past, well, I'm trying to get it, those hedges were very low. And if the landlord had them low at one point, there's absolutely no reason they shouldn't be very low again.
So, so Carl, what, what should, what height should be prescribed for the height of the hedges?
Maybe two feet. Max.
And who's going to, who's going to maintain that they would always stay that height? Would it be better if they were?
Right, because that's the, the normal site distance. For, for any road, anyone.
So an option, if I'm hearing, an option may be remove the shrubs, but keep it green. May, maybe that's just planting grass, but possibly removing the shrubs as an option? Or, or maintaining the shrubs low if, if the landlord can show that that's what he would do?
Well, do you want to talk to the landlord before we impose a condition?
Sure.
Yeah, I think the less place there is for someone to hide or to conceal themselves, you know, would discourage whatever illicit behavior might come out of that. I don't know what the chief thinks, but I, I think the chief would be on the same viewpoint if he's, if he's here.
Because that's, that's, that's a bit isolated over there as well.
It's a lot isolated over there.
Thank you, it is a lot isolated over there.
Yeah, it is, for sure.
Maybe some more lights?
I don't know, he's got to find out what the, what the owner of property has to know about it.
So Barry, should we continue this matter the next month while you work out these issues and come back to us?
That, that sounds like it's the right thing to do. So I, if, if that's what needs to be done, that's absolutely what we'll do.
Okay, so then we need a motion to continue this matter through the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made for the continuance by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by, seconded by Ms. Kaplan, a roll call on that motion, Ms. Cummings?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
And Ray Weldy, yes, so the motion to continue until the next meeting passes with a vote of 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Glassman, for, for being here and weighing in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item four on the agenda, consider approval of resolution 2020-25, authorizing the disposition of public records for the Lower Southampton Township Police Department.
So all I know about this is the chief and gentlemen from my office worked on this. They reviewed it together and proposed a ordinance, so the chief and the chief of the state have needed records. Chief?
Get rid of a lot of old paperwork, payroll stuff, actually, I need some. Mostly a lot of stuff that's unnecessary in the state. So we wanted to file the, the state's guideline record, and we need the ordinance to do it.
So the state, the state is deciding what the retention bas, basis for the record? I'm sorry?
We're following the state's recommended guideline, police records.
Okay, thank you.
There's a municipal records manual that the state, you know, passes on for jurisdictions and, and recommends how long to hold on to records before you have to destroy them.
Yeah, so the chief and Bryce McWiggin from my office reviewed that. And, you know, the recommendation is a motion to adopt, adopt the resolution.
Well, before we get far, before we go forward with that, I did have a, have a question. On the 30 days, if the drunk driving record has not been used in evidence for the body, the body video, the video on that?
Let me pull it up and take a look.
Okay, it just, that didn't seem like a sufficient amount of, I mean, you know, in my opinion, that didn't seem like a sufficient amount of time, these 30 days. If not used in evidence.
Okay, let me see here. You have a section right in front of you, what number?
It's, it's item 26.
You might have a copy that's, I don't, let me look at it real quick.
Okay.
The, the one that means 24 points in it.
Well, the one, the one in the bracket is 27.
Yeah, the resolution has 27.
Okay, maybe we got 60 minutes. The one that Bryce gave me, we go back and forth, I haven't.
So why don't we table this to next one and make sure we're acting on the right one?
Okay, I, I have one that Bryce sent me on August 5th, it's really, we'll talk over time.
Those bump to next meeting?
Yeah, mine goes to 24. So maybe.
These are all from, these are all from the county records, these guidelines, though. So, that's fine, but I, I still, I'm asking if the 30 days for the drunken driving and not using evidence for the video insufficient amount of time? That's my question. I, I understand the county is saying that that's fine, but I don't know if that's fine.
Ted, do you know what they typically do now with video from DUIs and things like that? Do they, do they hold on to them for a certain period of time and, and erase them?
If, for court, that goes right to the DA's office, we hold on to the server. I, I think what you guys have to say to my copy of this, that I, that the impressive one back and forth, I think the copy you guys have might be a little copy. We edited a couple of things.
Okay, so let's table it to each one.
I like, we'll postpone it.
I'm going to send it to you guys right now.
Well, we can't review it and vote on it.
Yeah.
I, I know.
I could hardly, I could hardly handle my mute button.
Okay, so we'll table this to next one, Mr. Shannon.
I like to postpone this to the next meeting.
Okay, is that a motionable action, Frank?
I think you can just do it.
Okay, so we'll table, we'll table agenda item four until the next meeting to work out any issues we have with the wording in the resolution. Item five, consider approval of a change order for the 2020 Township paving program in the amount of $59,192. Mark, do you want to summarize?
This is for the addition of two roads, Steel Road from Hampton to West Pine and Old Street Road from Street Road to Filmon Avenue.
Okay, and this came about because we, our, our bids came in low enough that we were able to do this with the money we had budgeted, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Any board questions?
So, hearing none, you need a motion?
Sir, is there a motion to approve the change order for the 2020 Township paving program in the amount of $59,192?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Cummings, we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes, that motion passes with a vote of 5-0. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Item six, consideration of the waiver of fees for the Library of Lower Southampton sign. And also, I think there's another waiver, it's for some repaving, correct?
Yes.
Some repaving of, is it Lower Southampton Fire Company?
Yes, sir.
Lower Southampton Fire Company's lot, so that, that waiver would involve two things. The library sign and Lower Southampton Township Fire Company's paving project. and Lower Southampton Township Fire Company's paving project.
Joe, did you want me to comment on the, sorry, Ray, did you want me to comment on the library?
Please.
All right, so the library signed a waiver would would include all construction, electrical and zoning uh, fees for the exception of four dollars and fifty cents due to the state training program. And then for the firehouse, it's a hundred and fifty dollar waiver.
Okay. Any questions from the board? No? Would anyone like to make a motion to waive the fees for the library's sign project and for Lower Southampton Fire Company's paving project?
I'll make that motion, Ray.
Thank you. Motion made by?
Excuse me, the motion is stated by Mr. Italia because he said there's one fee that had to be paid.
Four dollars, okay. I'll reword that. Um, is there a motion to waive the fees as stated by our zoning officer, Mr. Italia, for the sign at the Lower Southampton Township Library and for the paving project at Lower Southampton Township Fire Company?
No move.
Mr. Kutsaratus has made that motion. Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. Thank you. A roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes to that motion, um, as, uh, with the recommendations of Mr. Italia passes with a vote of five nothing. Um, item eight on the agenda, consider permission to advertise and sell township vehicles on municipid. Um, I believe there's a listing of vehicles included in our packet. If Mr. McDonald would like to summarize that for the board real quick?
Uh, yeah, this is, this is a list of seven vehicles that we're currently not using. Uh, they're all old and it's not worth putting money into them anymore. There's, there's two F-five-fifty dump trucks, two F-three-fifty pickup trucks, two Ford Expeditions, and one Crown Victoria.
Okay.
We want to put them on municipid.
Thank you.
Any idea what they're worth?
Well, a a very, uh, reasonable estimate is the total of, the total will be about fifty-seven thousand dollars. Five seven, fifty-seven thousand, we could get. Thank you. You're welcome.
And Mark, if the, if the starting bid isn't met, then we don't entertain any other offers?
Uh, that's a good question. I, we still do entertain offers, to my knowledge.
Okay.
But we we use, we set the starting bid. We we, they're very reasonably priced, actually.
I was just wondering, you know?
And these, these are, these are five-fifty dump trucks. The landscapers love these things. They they grab them, suck them up.
Okay.
Do any of these items need to be replaced?
Pardon me?
These vehicles need to be replaced at the township?
Uh, some of them already have been replaced. In fact, the two, the two expeditions have been replaced by out-of-service police vehicles that were handed down the line. Uh, the Crown Victoria was also replaced. So, but the other ones, they, they've already been replaced, most of them. He, these are just additional ones we don't need.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? It appears that there's none. Um, would anyone then like to make a motion to advertise the aforementioned vehicles listed by Mr. McDonald on municipid?
I like that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Cummings. Thank you. A second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Shannon. Thank you. We'll do a roll call. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. That motion passes with a vote of five zero. Last up is the appointment of a conflict solicitor. Mr. Gatto, if you just want to summarize why we're doing this and and what the recommendation is?
Sure. Um, we, Don Williams is, uh, no longer going to be, uh, doing, I guess, the legal side of the the business. Um, so Don, uh, Don basically would be, um, replaced in this particular instance. Um, and we're recommending the firm of Grim Bean and Thatcher, which would have the lead expirer or counsel of Patrick Armstrong at the firm, doing, doing Don's work. Firm itself, okay, I'm sorry, the firm itself has, uh, has, it's in Bucks County, has a strong tradition of municipal representation. Um, again, the municipal department has seven attorneys who devote their practice to just solely municipal representation.
I just have one question, Joe. Um, the fee proposal lists general municipal law at one hundred sixty-five an hour, litigation at one eighty-five an hour, real estate land development matters at one ninety-five an hour. Um, is, are those rates comparable, uh, less than, greater than what what Mr. Williams is?
They're absolutely in the ballpark, and I don't know exactly what, uh, let's say this way, I don't, my recollection, as far as Don, he's in, he's in that same ballpark. Uh, maybe slightly less than Don in in one instance, or maybe slightly scooch higher than Don in another instance, but the the fee structure is in line.
Okay.
Does Don not like us anymore? Frank?
Don's gonna be the manager in upper staff.
Oh. Okay, thank you.
Hey, I have a question for Mr. Dylan. Frank, uh, have you ever heard of this firm and ever had any dealings with him?
The the answer is yes, Lord Bacon Corland, uh, Grim Thatch, Grim Bean Thatcher's been around a long time. I, you know, I I know a lot of the old attorneys, they're now judges that used to work there. Uh, I don't know these particular gentlemen. I think I've dealt with Jonathan Rice. I haven't dealt with Mr. Armstrong, but, uh, they do good work.
All right.
Any other questions from the board?
Good luck, Don.
Uh, it appears that there are no more questions, and so we would need a motion then to appoint Patrick Armstrong of Grim Bean and Thatcher as our conflict solicitor, um, effective immediately. Is there a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Cummings. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. So the motion to appoint a conflict solicitor passes with a vote of five zero. Thank you. Uh, Joe, managers report?
Okay. Peter, if you could put that up? Well, one backbeat. Thank you. Um, I spoke to the, uh, RDA this week, um, Bucks County RDA, there, they will be having RDA grants for next year, uh, from what I'm told. So basically, we have to gear up for the next funding cycle, um, with, I think, the deadline being September thirtieth on that. So we'll have to, at the next board meetings, uh, go through the practice like we've done in past years uh, with regard to the selection and putting forward with certain grants. So I just wanted to give you a fairly good news on that, that there there are, there is a next funding cycle at the RDA. Have, next slide, next slide.
Before you go on, Joe, have have, did they advise you at all or give you any inclination as to expect a, uh, a reduced amount or a percentage of what we usually received in the past?
Did not, did not mention about, you know, what their total allocation's going to be. I don't, I don't know if they even know that part, but they are going to have a grouping, you know, of funding. Um, didn't go into percentages. Main thing was just making sure that they are going to have RDA grants for next year.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. All right, Pete? Okay, again, uh, last time we did the American Red Cross Blood Drive, we saved one hundred seventeen lives. We're trying it again to see if we could, uh, match that number again or surpass it. Uh, that's for August twenty-sixth, located at the old District Court Building at fifteen hundred Desire. We're going to start a little earlier for this one. It goes from nine to two PM. Um, and the last time, I think it was a little bit later, but we're going to start this one at nine AM to two PM. Um, next up on the list is for the Fire Marshal's Office, if we could continue to assist them, uh, with their food drive, bringing in non-perishable items. Again, the bins are located outside the old District Court Building. And then the last part is just various, various status of issues. Okay, um, here with me one second. All right, um, come in the next week or so, Penn Dot, we're in the infancy stages with, uh, with the turnpike in Penn Dot, uh, dealing with Buck Road and the bridge replacement project that they want to put forward. Um, so I'm going to just read you a brief description of the project. Uh, the project is the replacement of the existing Pennsylvania Turnpike Commission, PTC Bridge, number DB two-ten, carrying T-T dash three-five-five Buck Road over the Pennsylvania Turnpike Banland, I-two-seventy-six, at milepost two, three-four-eight point two-five in Lower Southampton Township and Upper Southampton, so Upper Southampton Township. The bridge is being proposed for replacement due to its age and existing, and the existing inadequate vertical clearance over the turnpike main line. As part of the replacement, the bridge will be redesigned to accommodate the anticipated future widening of the turnpike main line. So this is just a, a beginning stage, but we have an, I, myself and Mark will be attending this meeting in the next couple of weeks. So I just wanted to give the board a FYI on that for Buck Road. All right, the next one, okay, as far as the financials, dealing with the COVID, COVID impacts, um, just as kind of we projected, this is as of the end of July. Um, right now, our revenue has dropped in comparison to last year by four hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Um, take that, add on there the additional expenditures, even though we've taken, um, action to mitigate our expenses due to the fact that we had increases in whether it be, uh, you know, collective bargaining agreement increases as well as just normal expenses, uh, that our expenses, uh, basically are up one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars and nine, one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So basically, right now, as opposed to last year, a financial snapshot, we're basically in a hole five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars and some odd change. So I just wanted to give you, uh, a quick snapshot on the financial implications right now dealing with COVID.
And that's with the, that's with the furloughs we've made, right?
Yes, yes. That's correct. All right. The next, the next one dealing is with Mascarow. Um, I don't know where you begin with on this one. Um, I actually, it's funny that, uh, just, I'm in the township building tonight, and right now at eight fifteen, they're outside picking up trash right now, uh, right around our building. So, I mean, their performance has been quite lacking. Um, the various managers, the three managers have met. It's not just the lower south issue. It it's, it's basically a, a lower bucks issue with the, with this particular vendor. Um, we've done the legal, the legal way where, you know, we basically put them on notice as far as their bonding for the bonding company. And tomorrow, we have a, a, an additional meeting, uh, to meet with them. So we got to see how, how it goes. We're getting an overabundance of phone calls on a daily basis. Thank God for Ms. Connie. Um, she's spending most of her day just handling those phone calls and sending emails out to Mascarow saying, you know, you missed this street, you've missed this, this other location. Um, we're just trying to document it as best as we can. Um, but they definitely have to pick up their game, and for that, I apologize to the residents of the township. That, that's all I have to say on that. That's all for tonight.
Don't we want to bring up the?
I'm leaving on a bad note with Mascarow and, uh.
Don't we want to, don't we want to bring up about the, the compensation for the court?
Yes, um, we previously discussed the authorized Mr. McMenham and to be your representative, the township representative in the, in the trial. It's, it's a request of, uh, counsel that he be representative. I asked, uh, Joe Gatto what Mr. McMenham's hourly rate was when he retired. His hourly rate was fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents an hour. I'd ask for a motion to authorize that Mr. McMenham be paid his hourly rate for the time, uh, preparing, sitting, and acting a trial, and, uh, also for his daily expenses.
Well. Before this comes up for a vote, do you, and I don't know, this may just be a, you know, shooting darts at a board, but do you have any or any idea if this is a, a, a week-long testimony, if it could be over in a couple of days, or it's totally unknown?
I get the impression that it's not going to be over in a couple of days. I, I, after talking to the attorney, I get the impression it's not going to settle. Um, and that, you know, that's, that's what I know. I know, uh, I've talked to Mr. McMenham and he's told me, you know, he'll start building when he leaves the house and he'll stop building when he returns, and, you know, he has parking expenses, you know, that's what he's looking to be reimbursed for. He'll submit, now, he'll submit his expenses in hours to us. And the, the attorney, our attorney for the trial, said he needs him to prepare, that he's previously testified. And, uh, so the answer is no. I have no idea, because you don't know how long the trial's going to take.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yes, do we, uh, I know Mrs. Breen had written in with a question. Is that something that we need to be concerned with, with making this decision tonight?
No, I think you set the rate today. Uh, Ms. Breen asked the question, is, can that be reimbursed by the, the insurance company? And I, I indicated to you earlier that that's something I would want to.
Right, so if, if he is being reimbursed by the insurance company, then would he be, be reimbursed by both then, by the township and the insurance company?
No, he's, he's going to get paid once. We're going to pay him when we help to get reimbursed.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. All right, well, then that was a good point that she brought up, because maybe we might be able to be reimbursed from it.
And I'll look into that.
All right, thank you, Frank.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Nope.
Seeing that there's none, then we would need a motion to authorize, uh, Mr. McMenham to attend the upcoming trial um, on behalf of Lower Southampton Township, um, at a fee of fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents per hour for preparation and his attendance in court, and also for any expenses that he incurs. Correct, Frank?
Yes.
Okay, is there, uh, would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. We'll do roll call vote. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Weldy, I vote yes. That motion passes with a vote of five zero.
Ray, I have one more, uh, one more, actually, two more issues. One, I forgot, and that was the, the road paving program. The road paving program, actually, um, it'll be starting probably most likely the end of, uh, of August and carry into a little bit of September. Uh, we actually located them, Mark located them. They're working in upper south right now. And then soon as they're done with doing that, they're, the paving up here, they'll start our program. And then lastly, Matt, Matt had one issue that he wanted to bring forward. Matt?
Good evening, Mr. Care.
Hello, Matt.
I'm, uh, I'm here this evening to, uh, ask the board's authorization to, uh, allow Tri-State to prepare a request and proposal for an architectural firm for a building design down at the Dolphin Square. Uh, I'm here with Mr. Danavici and myself. Uh, if the board has any questions pertaining to this, uh, it's, it's going to take approximately twenty-four hours of preparation. Um, so it would total and cost, uh, around twenty-four hundred dollars for Tri-State to prepare the RFP. From there, we will then get fined as to the exact use of the spaces and the size of the buildings and what the, what the final budget would come to be before anything was awarded or bid on.
Matt, maybe you could just let listeners know, because you gave us a, an update at the work session, maybe for people that missed that. What does this proposed project, what kind of improvements does it involve?
Currently, the Dolphin Square, uh, it operates, you know, for four months a year, uh, and the restrooms are never open to the public. Uh, the proposed structure now would turn it into a three-season facility, which would allow the, uh, sports teams, the, uh, folks who are there to who are there to use basketball courts and tennis courts, uh, uh, be allowed to use the restrooms there. While the facility would be open for normal operation, exterior doors would be locked and you'd be able to use the, uh, facility from inside of the swim club, uh, making it more of a three-season amenity, not just service the aquatic facility, but the park as a whole.
Okay, thank you. So you're asking for permission then for not to complete this project, but for Tri-State to look into what would be required to complete this, right?
Uh, Tri-State and, uh, and myself, uh, John mostly would be preparing a request for proposal that would then go out to different architects and engineering firms to bid on the final design of this project, which would then be bid by a construction company.
Okay.
Any other board members' questions or, or concerns?
What, what's the anticipated, uh, expected cost for something like this, redoing what you're talking about? I'm just asking for a guess, that's all.
No, right now, in the, uh, general obligation fund where the bond money is sitting, uh, there's eight hundred thousand dollars allocated for this construction project.
And this RFP that, that you're asking, this request for proposal, to put that together with Tri-State, do you have a, a general idea of what we're looking to, to absorb in that?
Two thousand four hundred dollars, uh, and around twenty-four, uh, work hours put into it.
Okay. Thank you.
When would the, when are you hoping the completion would be by?
The completion of construction or the completion of RFP to then go advertising?
Of the completion of the project.
Um, that's to be determined. Um, uh, in a very, very hopeful and ambitious way. I would like to see it done by, you know, when we open, May. But it's probably not realistic. So it, we would have to get the ball rolling first to answer my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think for twenty-four hundred dollars, that's a pretty good, pretty good number for, for a project that's going to be that, that size. Uh, to be, we, we gotta do our homework, is what I'm asking.
Definitely.
You know, lowest bid may recoup that.
Yeah.
Okay. If there's no further questions, then, uh, Mr. Gilbert is asking for a motion to approve a request for proposal from Tri-State engineers for improvements to be made at the Dolphin Club. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make it.
Made by Mr. Shannon, a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, seconded by Ms. Cummings. We'll do roll call vote, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Wildy, I vote yes. That motion passes with a vote of five zero. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, guys.
That's all for tonight, sir.
That's all for tonight. Thank you. Um, supervisors comments, uh, if, if the board doesn't mind, I'd like to go out of order tonight, um, just to get out of the way that I have before I forget about it. Um, the first thing's relatively short. Uh, the nine-eleven heroes run is still on for September twelfth, two thousand twenty, nine AM at Russell Elliott Memorial Park. Um, we've received some, uh, I guess, recommendations on guidelines to follow from the Bucks County Department of Health. Um, there's been a great amount of enthusiasm in the race and pre-registration. Um, sponsors are jumping on board as we speak. Um, and the members of the VAC, the Veterans Advisory Council, putting a lot of work into this. The VAC is going to meet, uh, next Wednesday night, August nineteenth, to come up with a final determination. Is the race to go or not? And can we meet? Can, can we abide by the guidelines set down by the, by the Department of Health? Um, and the second thing I have, and it'll be the last thing, is, um, I'm, I'm asking the board to join me, um, in a, in an event, I'll call it. Um, I received a, a phone call, um, in an inquiry a few days back from a township resident that wanted to, um, set up some type of appreciation for the Lower Southampton Township Police Department, some type of Back the Blue event, for lack of a, a better term, a term that's been overused. But certainly she wants to, she wanted to join and see if I could set something up with her to show an appreciation for the LSPD. So what I'm asking the board to do, instead of me doing it by myself, is the board to join me, um, and, uh, authorize or approve, uh, the use of the Lower Southampton Athletic Fields at the Township Building on Sunday, August thirtieth, from one PM to three PM. Um, those fields, uh, I would then obtain a field permit from Matt Gilbert, Mr. Gilbert, the Park and Recreation Director. I've had discussions with Mr. Gilbert, um, already. And Mr. Gilbert, um, said that as long as we make a requirement that people social distance, along with a recommendation that everyone wears a mask, he would be comfortable issuing that permit, um, especially with the size of those fields. Um, and outdoor events like that call for a limit of two hundred and fifty people. Um, Mr. Gilbert seems to think that there's more than adequate room at that location to, to accommodate two hundred and fifty people. Um, as far as, uh, crowd control, I spoke to Chief Criminal, the Chief of Police. The chief has, um, in, expressed a desire and supports this endeavor, um, and, uh, said he will speak to his officers, um, about not only showing up at the event on duty and off duty, but also handling, uh, crowd control for the event as far as parking, um, and things of that nature. Um, there's been some guests that invited. I'll outline them right now. District Attorney Matt Weintraub, uh, he's on vacation that week and says he'll be back that Sunday. And he should be able to make it sometime between one and three. Representative Frank Farrey is committed. Former Chief of Police, uh, Duke Donley is committed. Former Chief of Police, uh, Bill Wigman is committed. And I've reached out to Don Giordano, a police supporter, um, and radio show host of WPHT, um, and have yet to receive a reply. Um, and one thing that I thought of, and the chief spoke of right away, thought of is what if there is some type of counter rally, I guess for lack of a better term, um, uh, that would be, if they would desire to hold that. Um, and if that happens, or if there's any desire to hold that, um, the organizers of that would also have to seek a permit from Parks and Recreation. And the chief seems to think that, uh, they would be able to, um, police a situation like that should it occur. Now, I don't want, I'm, I'm looking for this to be enclosed on the fields, not to be out on any street or walking in any traffic or waving flags in front of any cars. And it would be a family-friendly event where the, the families of Lower Southampton, whoever else shows up, would be able to show their appreciation for the police and thank them for, for the job that they've done. The police department recently received accreditation last Tuesday in Harrisburg. Um, and this is just a chance for people to thank the PD. Um, if the board has any questions, um, there's probably some things I've left out. Feel free to shoot. And before I go hard, I've also spoke to Mr. Kutsaratus about this. And at the same time I was planning this, Mr. Kutsaratus is putting together a, a, a run of his own, which I fully support. Um, maybe a couple of months later after this, um, I believe Mr. Kutsaratus's idea is a great idea, um, and involves honoring not only Lower Southampton's department, but multiple departments, maybe at another location in the township. And I feel coolly confident that both of these events can be pulled off to show our appreciation for not only our police, but for the entire Lower Bucks, maybe the entire, all the police departments in Bucks County and maybe, uh, from Northeast Philadelphia in general.
So I, I had calls from Ray, after Mr. Koo Ralston asking me about this. And my only comment after thinking about it was, I just want Joe to verify that we have insurance coverage for this. So there's no, no issue with that.
Well, I tell you what, if I can jump on board real quick too, because Joe, I apologize. I, I did not reach out to you yet. And, uh, if Ray is done, I can maybe go second and I can jump on board and tell you guys what I was thinking about too. So if, if you're done, Ray, I'll, uh...
No, go ahead, Kim, because, you know, I think both of these are fantastic ideas.
Uh, well, over the past few weeks, I've been thinking of, I, I've been reaching out to some representatives that I know from, uh, Middletown Township, Ben Salem Township, and Lower Southampton Townships in regards to a Back the Blue motorcycle ride. Ideally, I'd like to have this leave from a local PD and then possibly ending up, after speaking to, uh, Mr. Gilbert, possibly ending up at Russell Elliott. Um, Ray's, uh, Ray's email that he, uh, he spoke about the, the idea that he, he had brought up prompted me to give Ray a call and get his thoughts. And, you know, as Ray spoke, he, uh, he's in support of this, but we both agreed that I should reach out to Matt Gilbert, which I did. Matt had, had some positive comments, but, you know, he also had some concerns, as he should. And I'll let Matt speak on that in a moment. I also reached out to Frank Dylan. Uh, Frank has, you know, some positive comments, but some concerns, which he should. And I would like to see if we could work out all the details. Maybe the, uh, the board would cater to an idea like this in, you know, possibly October or so. Um, as you guys all know, uh, you know, the, the motorcycle enthusiasts are always big supporters of the, uh, police departments nationwide. Middletown Township and Ben Salem Township has motorcycle patrols, which I would like them to be part of. And I just think it would be a great idea to have something like this over at, uh, at Russell Elliott. I've been fortunate enough to have, uh, have a few people offer their services in regards to donating some, some services. And I, I just think it would be a nice event. You know, God willing, the, uh, the weather is good for something like this. But we would also have a, a rain date as a backup also. Well, that's kind of my thought. And, you know, if Matt and Mr. Dylan can both comment on this, I'd, I'd appreciate it, guys.
Well, my, my comment was, this is a great idea. I just need Joe to verify that there's coverage, that the township doesn't have any issues.
Okay. How about, Frank, anything, or I'm sorry, Matt?
Uh, I'm also in agreement. I think it's a great idea. Anything to support our, uh, police officers. Um, my concern would be by the definition of the, the mass gathering. We, we don't want to exceed that two hundred and fifty people. Uh, even though I think Russell Elliott could smoke for distance, six people, uh, six feet apart and have more than two hundred and fifty, the regulation states that the cap is at two hundred and fifty people. So I know, uh, Mr. Kutsaratus and I discussed a couple of options by putting a cap on the event, uh, before it even began, which it, it could, it could be a good idea. I have some reservations that if folks were to join the ride, you know, even not knowing exactly what it was for, by the time they arrived at the park, it would be more than two hundred and fifty individuals. So I think as long as we give it the consideration that it deserves and properly planned, it can be executed safely. Um, I'm just going to make sure we're, we're covering all our bases.
Joe Galdo, are you on here?
Yeah. Once I'm supplied the fact pattern on how you want to plan it, and I would provide it to the insurance broker to see if it's a coverable item. That's how I would attack it.
Okay. Um, I tell you what, how about if I reach out to you tomorrow, Joe, and we can go from there?
Yeah. Um, I do have the Mascarot meeting and then I have another meeting early in the morning. Um, probably after two, Kim, would be fine.
That would be, yeah, I get done work around three-ish. So that's perfect for me, Joe.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, thank you, board, for, uh, taking this into consideration. And that, that's, that's all I have, right? We can move on to everybody else.
Thank you. Thank you. And Joe, uh, I'll make the same inquiry tomorrow then regarding August thirtieth, you know, whether, uh, our insurance carrier will cover an, an event where spectators show up at the Lower South Athletic Fields.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Um, that's all I have. Uh, Mr. Shannon?
Yes, sir. Uh, sounds like great ideas. I love it. Uh, being an, an old military guy, maybe we can get some of those guys here too. You know, they put us where we are. Other than that, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Um, yes. Thank you for, um, bringing that to, to, um, the township. And I'm definitely in favor of it. Anything we can do for, uh, men and women in blue, I'm all behind it. I would just like to remind people to, um, visit our library Facebook page and web, and their website for virtual programs. And just a reminder that I did remind people, um, residents at the last meeting, because a lot of residents may not realize that on the Lower Southampton Township website, we do have under, um, menu contact. There's a user-friendly form for any concerns or questions that you can fill out. Of course, you can call, but you can fill out as well. And that will get to the proper department. And that's all I have. And thank you also, um, Kim, for the idea of the, uh, the run. I've been on a few motorcycle runs myself, and they're really enjoyable. So thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I tell you what, Deb, I got a backseat. You're more than welcome.
Okay. I have the helmet.
We can, we can take care of that, Joe.
Okay.
Kim, did you have anything else, or were, were you, were you covering?
No, no, that's, uh, that's all for me, Ray.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Cummings?
Well, both ideas sound wonderful. Looking forward to both events. Um, thank you for both, you know, putting yourselves, uh, you know, out there to plan something like this. I'd be more than happy to help in, you know, either event of the township and think the families will enjoy it. Um, speaking of the police, I, I wanted to thank the police and the fire department. Last week during that term that we had, they were, you could hear the sirens. You could, they're driving around, you can see them. They were out there. So I want to thank, you know, both fire and the police for their quick response, um, you know, to whoever, you know, needed that. And it was, um, a great job done by all. Um, wanted to, you know, continue to be kind to everybody, to be really diligent in their, you know, every day, everyday lives, masks, social distance. We also want to make sure that, you know, continue to visit our local businesses. When we visit our local businesses, be kind. Everybody's out there and they're trying to do the best job they can. I want to, um, wish everybody a rest of the nice summer. And, um, we'll see you back.
Thank you, Sue.
Ray, Ray, before you adjourn, you proposed this, I think you're proposing it as a township event. You want the board to vote in favor that's subject to approval of our, our insurance carrier?
Yes, I would. I, in fact, uh, thank you for reminding me of that. Um, I'm asking the board to, um, I'd like to make a motion to ask the board to approve the use of the Lower Southampton Baseball Field on August third, to August thirtieth, two thousand twenty, from one PM to three PM for a show our appreciation to the police, um, rally event, subject to the approval of the township's insurance carrier. That would be my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Kaplan. We'll do a roll call, Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. And Ray Wildy?
Yes.
I thanked the board and I thanked Mr. Dylan for reminding me. Thank you. Um, is there any other business that we've forgotten or neglected?
I don't think so.
Okay. They're hearing that there's none. We'd need a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Made by Mr. Shannon, second?
I'll second.
Okay, somebody seconded. Uh, Ms. Cummings? Miss, Miss Cummings?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Kaplan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shannon?
Yes.
Thank you. Ray Wildy, yes. Meetings adjourned. Thank you all. And, uh, stay safe and, and enjoy the rest of the summer.
Good night.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.
See you, guys.
Take care.